For the improvements that we made to our municipal equality index score, which without the work of those hardworking residents and the expertise of our staff as well as Don Holliday, those achievements would not have been possible, and I want to make sure they get the recognition that they deserve. Item three is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the city council by unanimous consent can designate those routine agenda items if they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. I need a motion to place items four through thirty on the consent docket.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to place items four through thirty on the consent docket. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The consent docket is placed unanimously.
Thank you. Item four, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash nineteen upon first reading, rezoning three nineteen, three twenty-one, and three twenty-three East Dawes Street from R two multifamily dwelling district and C two general commercial district to Spud's Simple Planned Unit Development District. Item five, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty upon first reading to grant special use for fraternity or sorority in R three multifamily dwelling district for property located at thirteen twenty College Avenue. Item six, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-eight upon first reading by title, amending chapter eight, section two oh four of the city code to allow performance-based efficiency contracts as authorized by state law as an exception to competitive bidding. Item seven, acknowledging receipt of reports entitled Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for Fiscal Year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty, as prepared by the City of Norman Finance Department and audited by the firm of B K D L L P for the City of Norman, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, Norman Economic Development Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority. Item eight, easement twenty twenty-one dash forty-one, acceptance of a permanent sidewalk easement donated by Janet Hammond's for the Brook Street Sidewalk Project included in the F Y E twenty twenty-one Sidewalk Project. The following ten easements are for the Creston Way and Schultz Drive Drainage Improvement Projects. Item nine, easement twenty twenty-one dash forty-two, a permanent drainage easement from Chelsa Marie Songer in the amount of fifty-six hundred dollars. Item ten, temporary easement twenty twenty-one dash forty-three, a temporary construction easement donated by Chelsa Marie Songer. Item eleven, easement twenty twenty-one dash forty-four, a permanent drainage easement from Robert M. and Lois M. Pickard, co-trustees of the Pickard Living Trust, in the amount of six thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Item twelve, temporary easement twenty twenty-one dash forty-five, a temporary construction easement donated by Robert M. and Lois M. Pickard, co-trustees of the Pickard Living Trust. Item thirteen, temporary easement twenty twenty-one dash forty-six, a temporary construction easement from Carol Hoffman and Jim Hoffman, AKA James F. Hoffman, in the amount of eighteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Item fourteen, temporary easement twenty twenty-one dash forty-seven, a temporary construction easement from Amanda Clark, AKA Amanda L. Clark, and Amber R. Walker, in the amount of five hundred dollars. Item fifteen, easement twenty twenty-one dash forty-eight, a permanent drainage easement from George Bradley Hawkins and Nancy Constance Hawkins, in the amount of thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars. Item sixteen, temporary easement twenty twenty-one dash forty-nine, a temporary construction easement donated by George Bradley Hawkins and Nancy Constance Hawkins. Item seventeen, easement twenty twenty-one dash fifty, a permanent drainage easement from Lena M. Smith in the amount of one thousand dollars. Item eighteen, temporary easement twenty twenty-one dash fifty-one, a temporary construction easement donated by Lena M. Smith. Item nineteen, final site development plan and final plat for Red Canyon Ranch Edition, section seven, a planned unit development, located one half mile north of East Tecumseh Road and one fourth mile west of Twelfth Avenue Northeast. Item twenty, final plat for Sage at Cobblestone Creek Edition, located one half mile south of Cedar Lane Road on the east side of Twelfth Avenue Southeast. Item twenty-one, final site development plan and final plat for The Curve at University North Park Edition, a planned unit development, located one thousand five hundred and fifty feet south of West Tecumseh Road on the east side of Twenty-Fourth Avenue Northwest. Item twenty-two, final plat for Trailwoods West Edition, located one half mile north of West Rock Creek Road on the east side of Twelfth Avenue Northwest. Item twenty-three, donation in the amount of five hundred dollars from the Citizens Police Academy alumni of Norman to be used by the police department. Item twenty-four, acceptance of an incentive payment for the amount of seven thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars from the Pepsi Beverages Company for the exclusive sale of Pepsi products at Westwood Golf Course and Westwood Family Aquatic Center and budget appropriation. Item twenty-five, special claim twenty twenty-one dash six submitted by Houston Joy in the agreed amount of three thousand five hundred dollars for expenses incurred as a result of a collision with a fire department truck on June fourth, twenty twenty, in Oklahoma City. Item twenty-six, final acceptance and final payment of contract twenty twenty-one dash forty-eight with Musco Lighting Incorporated for the Norman Forward Andrews Park Skate Park Lighting Project. Item twenty-seven, contract twenty twenty-one dash fifty with Garver LLC in the amount of four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to provide engineering services for sludge de-watering improvements at the water reclamation facility. Item twenty-eight, contract twenty twenty-one dash seventy-four, a purchase and sale agreement with J. P. Morgan Chase Bank National Association in the amount of five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the purchase of real property located at three eighteen East Comanche Street plus closing and related costs for use as a transit transfer facility. Item twenty-nine, resolution twenty twenty-one dash seventy-three declaring that the Norman City Council, Norman Municipal Authority, Norman Utilities Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority meeting scheduled for December twenty-second, twenty twenty will be canceled. Item thirty, resolution twenty twenty-one dash seventy-four appropriating two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from the sanitation fund balance to provide additional debris grinding at compost facility. I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
Motion.
Second.
Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket?
I have one.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yeah, in regards to item number seven, will there be a presentation or a report made on this for public information?
Good evening, Councilmember Peacock. I'm Anthony Francisco, the finance director. We are pleased to present the annual report for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth of twenty twenty. It is on the consent docket, but we'll be glad to respond to any questions that you may have. I'm glad to introduce our chief accountant, Clint Mercer. We also have individuals here from our external audit firm, B K D, who may respond to any questions that you may have.
I don't have any questions in particular. I just want to know if the report we made public at some point.
We did not plan a presentation, but we'll be glad to.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The consent docket is approved unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Due to the COVID-19 restrictions, items off consent will have a time limit. The applicant is allowed to speak for ten minutes. The items off consent have a thirty-minute limit total. No one can speak more than three minutes. Item thirty-one, resolution twenty twenty-one dash seventy, approving the incurrence of indebtedness by the Norman Municipal Authority issuing its sales tax revenue note taxable series twenty twenty, providing that the organizational document creating the authority is subject to the provisions of the note indenture, authorizing the issuance of said note, waiving competitive bidding with respect to the sale of said note, and approving the proceedings of the authority pertaining to the sale of said note, ratifying and confirming a sales tax agreement with the city and NMA pertaining to the year-to-year pledge of certain sales tax revenues, and approving and authorizing an amended sales tax agreement. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Thank you. I would like to recognize Anthony Francisco, our finance director, for a presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Norman Municipal Authority trustees. I am here to speak to items thirty-one and thirty-two, but I was remiss in addressing Councilmember Peacock's question earlier about the annual financial report in not mentioning that it is an unmodified opinion, a clean opinion, that the financial reports do fairly state the financial position of the City of Norman and its related trusts as of June thirtieth. That's great news. And these day and times, just, I needed to recognize Clint Mercer and his staff for the great work that they continue to do. Related to items thirty-one and thirty-two, this is the third and final issuance of debt related to the Norman Forward Sales Tax Program. This issuance is primarily related to financing the indoor multi-sport and aquatic center. There's information in council's packet that gives background on all of the financings that we have done, but this financing is for twenty-two point two million dollars, and we are very pleased with the responses that we got for our request for financing proposals related to this item. As you'll see in your packet, we got three responses from qualified banking firms, Rogers County Bank of Claremore, and J. P. Morgan Chase. Plano, Texas were actually tied with interest rate proposals of two point two nine percent. The proposal from R.C. Bank, however, did offer a call feature, which in essence means that if we are in a position to repay the debt upfront or in advance of the final maturity, then we can do that in the R.C.B. proposal with no penalty. So that additional flexibility kind of is a tiebreaker for us, and we would recommend to you that we accept the proposal from R.C.B. Bank. Again, two point two nine is a great rate. This is a taxable issuance, and we're very pleased with the recommendation that we made to you. And I'll be glad to respond to any questions that you have. We have representatives here from our bond counsel firm and from our financial advisory team who may respond to any questions as well.
Are there any questions from Councilmember Beerman?
I just have one question, Anthony. Was the Norman Forward Citizens Financial Oversight Board involved in this decision at all?
Yes, they certainly saw the request for proposals that went out just as the responses came in today. They have not seen the responses, but we did discuss the proposals and what we hoped to be successful responses in our meeting on yesterday. And we were saying yesterday that we hoped to get under three percent, so we're very happy with these responses.
Okay. Did they provide any recommendations, or was it more just overview?
Well, in advance of the proposals going out, they had recommended that we move forward. Again, the financing proposals for the Norman Forward Program, the three tranches, if you will, was discussed, has been discussed since twenty fifteen, and we are actually issuing much less debt than we thought we would originally have to do. We're able to pay for a lot of the projects on a pay-as-you-go basis and save some of the interest costs. So again, from a financial perspective and from the Citizens Financial Oversight Board's perspective, this is very positive.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate it.
Are there any other questions from council regarding this item? Seeing none, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The resolution was adopted unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item thirty-two, resolution twenty twenty-one dash seventy, authorizing the Norman Municipal Authority to issue its sales tax revenue note taxable series twenty twenty in the aggregate principal amount of twenty-two million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the note to be sold on a negotiated basis, ratifying and confirming a sales tax agreement with the City of Norman and the Norman Municipal Authority pertaining to a year-to-year pledge of certain sales tax revenue, and approving and authorizing an amended sales tax agreement, approving and authorizing execution of a supplemental note indenture providing that the organizational document creating the authority is subject to the provisions of said indenture, and authorizing and directing the execution of the note and other documents relating to the transaction. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Motion.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The resolution was adopted unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item thirty-three, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eight, amending the site plan adopted in ordinance oh three oh four dash thirty-three for property located at five twelve North Interstate Drive. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is the applicant or someone representing the applicant here to make a presentation? Thank you. Please introduce yourself, and just a reminder, you have ten minutes.
Okay. George DeCane with Bluen Associates. We are the engineers on the project. We have brought this in front of you because the original site plan for this zoning was a complete parking lot, so in order to be able to allow for construction of two buildings on the site, we had to come back through and adopt a new site plan that would show some buildable area on there. So that is what we are. I do have somebody here from America's Car Mart if you do have any questions, so be available for anything you may need.
Thank you. With that, are there any questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Beerman?
This might be a question for staff. Someone, Jane, could someone maybe speak to the history of this lot and why back in two thousand and three it was designated for parking lot only? Why not just go all the way and allow for construction in the future when they're ready? And also, I love your mask.
Thank you. So it's my understanding this zoning, when it was brought forward previously, was done so with some special conditions on it. At that time, staff felt that they could, and you can if you want to, but the zoning district was established with some special conditions for fencing. I don't remember exactly what else there was, but a wall, parking, no lighting installed in the rear of the lot, lighting to be installed in front of the wall directed away from the residential area and stuff like that. So the property owners that were notified when that rezoning was going forward at that time came to the staff and I guess council, and they established these guidelines. So really, they're actually taking the zoning with the special conditions back to the straight zoning with no special conditions attached to it, and then also amending that site plan that was done.
Okay, I guess I was just wondering, it seemed very specific at the time, and so I was wondering if it was addressing any specific concerns of the nearby property owners, or just trying to get a sense of why these types of conditions were put in back then to give me a better sense of why we should feel comfortable reverting it back.
Well, it's my understanding from doing the research that there were neighbors that were concerned at that time. We didn't have many, if any, people show up to the pre-development, and we've had no protests on this application. Yeah, no neighbors attended the pre-development meeting for this item.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Holman?
Yes, I had a question about lighting, just to be clear, about how it would be set up, because, you know, the dealership next to it, I've always driven by there and seen how brightly lit it is at night, and wondered how some of the people that live in those condos can stand it. So I know since that dealership was built years ago, we have a commercial lighting ordinance now and things like that, so I'd just clarify that, you know, there are neighbors that maybe they haven't complained or protested, but still want to make sure that they're, you know, not having light blasting in their whole backyard, so.
I'm sorry, they'll be required to submit the photometric plan with their building permit whenever they bring that in, and so it'd be no more than point-two-foot candles, and then, of course, all the lights have to be full cutoff.
Okay, and then the stormwater situation on the property, I know it would drain into Brookhaven Creek, but is there any kind of, anything to consider about this property involving stormwater, or that this project might be doing to improve stormwater in the area?
I'll let them answer that for you.
So on the Car Mart parcel, we actually do have a stormwater pond, so we'll have a stormwater pond for detention and outfall structure that drains into, there's a drainage channel on the north side, so we'll be limiting the flows to as if it was grass, so shouldn't be much of an impact.
Okay, okay, I appreciate that. That's all the questions I have at the moment.
Are there any other questions? Councilmember Petron?
So my questions were about stormwater as well. Can you speak, have you had anybody take a look at this, or maybe I can speak with staff about the engineering behind, about the stormwater?
So, I don't know how technical you want me to get, but we did it, we do the T R fifty-five method, which is the Seoul Conservation Service. It's a method that's been established for a while now with rainfall events and all that, and we size it anywhere from all the way up to the hundred-year storm, send it into city staff, they review it, make sure that they concur with our numbers, and, you know, so far, having it really, it sounds like everything has gone pretty smoothly.
Is Mr. O'Leary here? No?
Yes, ma'am. Sean O'Leary, Director of Public Works.
Thank you. Well, as you know, you're Ward Three resident yourself, we've had the new floodplain maps because of downstream flooding has changed and development has changed, kind of the topography and flooding area in Ward Three, so I'm particularly sensitive to Brookhaven Creek and what's happening here. So can you speak to the residents that might be watching about whether or not this is going to have any impact in the future for runoff?
Sure, happy to, and I appreciate the mention of the changes to the floodplain maps. That'll be coming up in a couple of items yet this evening, and Dr. Evenson will be here to speak more about the larger picture of floodplain map changes in this area. You are correct, this is the Brookhaven Creek watershed, and as the gentleman indicated, again, we review or require each development, each new development, or in this case, a plat that had expired that is now coming back as a final plat, to comply with all of our stormwater regulations. In other words, making the post-development runoff conditions, the rate no greater than the rate in the pre-development condition. That's been the standard here in Norman since nineteen eighty-two and continues to be a very effective standard here. What they've chosen to do here is an open grassline detention basin on the northwest corner of the parcel. They do submit a detailed drainage report as the first step in the process. Our staff has reviewed that and found it to be meeting or exceeding all of our standards, and then they produce the site plan and all of the discharge locations, as the gentleman indicated, and all of that has met our standards. So again, any new development is going to increase the volume of runoff, that we know, and there's not much we can do about that, but they have met or exceeded our standards for keeping the rate of discharge into Brookhaven Creek as it is today, meaning that that bathtub, if you will, that detention basin will hold the water for a period of time, it'll discharge at a controlled rate.
And you feel comfortable and confident with this plan that your downstream neighbors are protected?
Yeah, Councilmember, we would not be here tonight if the staff had not recommended this to go forward.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Hall?
I'm not exactly sure who this question's for. Again, it's just for anyone who might be living in the area that's listening to this application. One of the things that, one of the special conditions that's being removed is the six-foot brick wall and the ten-foot landscaping strip, so I'm assuming there's still going to be some kind of barrier fencing put in place because it does back up to a residential area.
Yes, we do intend to do a privacy fence along the back, kind of make sure that we keep separate. I mean, we want that anyways from a protection for our standpoint as well as a barrier for their standpoint.
Okay, just to make sure we had that covered. Thank you.
Any other questions from council regarding this item? Seeing none, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted on second reading unanimously?
I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted on final reading unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item thirty-four, preliminary plat for Car Mart Edition, five twelve North Interstate Drive. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plat.
Motion.
Second.
Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Seeing none, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted on final reading unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item thirty-five, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash ten, amending the city code to add a definition for base level engineering, incorporate and adopt the new Federal Emergency Management Agency Report dated January fifteenth, twenty twenty, eliminate references to the conditional letter of map provision, and allow for additional information to be considered in certain zones in the absence of base flood elevation data and floodway data. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion.
Second. Thank you. I'd now like to recognize Mr. Sean O'Leary, Director of Public Works, to make a presentation. Oh.
Do it instead.
Okay. Carrie Evenson?
Make sure I can find the presentation here. All right, thank you very much. Carrie Evenson, Stormwater Program Manager. We're talking today about floodplain ordinance revision. I'm going to talk pretty fast so I can get through this in ten minutes. We have some ordinance revisions that are necessary to adopt new flood insurance studies and the flood insurance rate maps for Ten Mile Flat Creek and Brookhaven Creek watersheds. There are some boundary changes. Every so often, FEMA will fund some studies to adjust our watershed maps, our floodplain maps. Floodplain maps are kind of a point-in-time study of where that floodplain boundary is, so periodically with development, those maps need to be updated, and so this is that process that we've gone through. Takes a couple of years, I think this is about a five-year process that we've been through to get these maps updated, and the key thing to note for this is in the Ten Mile Flat Creek watershed, the boundary changes to the floodplain mean that twenty-eight properties will be added to the floodplain, and eighteen properties will be removed from the floodplain based on the changes that the modeling show for the floodplain, and in the Brookhaven Creek watershed, thirty-nine properties will be added to the floodplain, forty-two properties will actually be removed. Forty-two properties will actually be removed from the floodplain. And to show you what that looks like on a map, Ten Mile Flat Creek, and I'm going to get my directions wrong, that's the bigger one that you can see there with more floodplain on it. That, the red and the green are the new floodplain boundaries. The blue are the existing, so you can see where there's some blue that isn't overlapped by green. That means those properties will be removed from the floodplain. Anywhere there's green, where there's no blue, those are what's being added. Same with Brookhaven Creek on the other side. And you can see that's a little bit harder, that's a little bit narrower floodplain, so it's a little bit harder to see. But as you get closer to the Canadian River, you can see a patch there on the east that's being removed. Properties that are being removed in this location right here. So that's what this looks like. When FEMA's done with their studies, done with their public comment process, they give us these maps and then it's our duty to then adopt them as our regulatory floodplanes. So through the process, as FEMA goes through this process, we are involved with them as partners. And as they are looking at their preliminary product, putting out that preliminary map, they let us know that it's available and we hold public meetings. So we held public meetings on August twenty-second and September fourth, twenty nineteen, back when we could hold public meetings. And notified those particular property owners that were going to be either added or removed so that they could come and speak to us directly about those changes and how they would affect their properties. The next step in this then is for FEMA to gather those public comments and any challenges, address that, adjust the map if necessary, and then issue a letter of final determination. That letter of final determination was issued and received by the city on July fifteenth, twenty twenty. And then we have to begin the process to adopt those map changes. And so the first part of that process is to go to the floodplain permit committee and get their approval. They approved the ordinance revision unanimously on September eighth, twenty twenty. Then we take it to the planning commission. They approved the ordinance revisions unanimously on October eighth, twenty twenty. And then we bring it to council, and you've had first reading already, and this is second reading. And the ordinance has to be in effect by January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one in order for the city to stay in the NFIP or the National Flood Insurance Program. So that's very important for citizens who have flood insurance. We need to stay in that in order for them to continue to get their discounts that they're receiving based on our participation in the community rating system, the CRS program. So just kind of summarizing that, my dates, I did not adjust. The second reading is today, and hopefully with that, we will be able to satisfy our requirements. And the flood insurance study and the new rate maps become effective January fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Some of the major changes that are in the ordinance revision, correction of minor typographical errors. So as we go in, there's things that we see that we need to adjust. There's an adjustment to the definition of manufactured home to be consistent with FEMA requirements. It actually, it said a hundred days, it needs to be a hundred and eighty to be consistent with FEMA. And that's how long that, that manufactured home can be on location before it has to be, if it stays longer than that, it becomes more like a permanent home. And there are different requirements that it has to meet. We updated references to the FEMA map panels and the flood insurance study. We updated titles for the floodplain committee members. And then we added FEMA's base level engineering data as approved data that can be used for determining base flood levels in A zones where there are no pre-calculated base flood elevations. And that's just basically to say that that's allowed data to use. That's a new, relatively new product that FEMA's developed, and if it's available, engineers can use that as appropriate. And that is all I have. I hope I got that in ten minutes.
All right. Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Seeing none, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Patron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted on second reading unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Patron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted unanimously on final reading.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item thirty-six, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twelve, rezoning two thousand one East Rock Creek Road from RE Residential Estates to A one General Agricultural District. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I'd like to recognize Ernest Bell, the applicant, with a presentation. And just a reminder, your comments should be limited to ten minutes.
Thank you. My name is Ernie Bell. We had an idea that we thought that we would grow pot in our garage. Had no idea that this was going to rain crap on us and how this was going to be this big of a deal. We live on five acres. We have a garage behind it. It's not, it's barely visible from the street. One neighbor to our west is a football field away. Neighbor to our east is two football fields away. Then there's a pond and thirty-seven acres of scrub brush. If you go to the east of us on Twenty Fourth Street, all seven of those properties there are agricultural. There are only two properties that are residential estates. We're one of them. We wanted to be agricultural again. The property used to be agricultural. Our plan, like I said, you know, what's screwed up about this area, what Oklahoma's done to this whole medical marijuana thing, is if I want to grow, go, go lie and get a medical marijuana license or a prescription, I can grow six seedlings and six plants. My son can grow six seedlings and six plants, and my wife can. But if I want to grow one plant for commercial purposes, no, 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 we can't do that. So at any rate, the residential estates is zoned, it says for general purpose farm and gardening. General purpose farm and garden. I, I, what that means, if you use the plain English of it, it sounds to me like that's what we're doing here. We planned to do it in the garage. It's a brick structure, it's completely enclosed, it's built into the side of a hill. And that's pretty much what our plan was. We ran into, we have lots of people protesting this. And the law says that zoning isn't supposed to be a popularity contest. We're about to find out tonight what it is. Because the, the legal standard from a constitutional perspective is a man should be allowed to do what he wants to do with his property absent, if he, if he's not bothering his neighbors. And I contend that I'm not affecting my neighbors in any way. They won't see it, touch it, smell it, taste it, simply not there. And I'm going to, you know, I, I'd like to sort of sit down and hear some comments. But before I do that, I'm going to shoot down some of the lies that have been said. There's a trash can over there. It's, it looks like it's a twenty gallon trash can. We grow pot plants in five gallon trashcans, or five gallon pots. There's a dish underneath them. Why is this important? Why am I telling you how to grow, you know, grow basic stuff? Because there are people here that have made a huge deal out of this. And if you look at the attachments to this thing, it's just one lie after another. For starters, they talk about runoff. When you pour water into a pot and there's a dish or a tray, there is no runoff, zero runoff, lie. Somehow we're going to pollute the pond and back. Well, if I put it in my attic and the water was to overflow the pot and go downstairs, if you'd have come out to the property, we invited a handful of people to come out and look and walk the property. Nobody took us upon our offer, mind you. But the, the pond is uphill, water doesn't flow uphill. See, the idea that we're polluting the pond is just complete crap, more lies. Oh, we're going to, we're going to use all the water up in the, in the, in the well. Well, we have rural water, city water, city of Norman water, and we have a well. The amount of water necessary to, to, to water fifty plants is about as much as you'd use in your, if you, if you're one of those people to take a bath instead of a shower every day. It's, it's about fifty gallons a week. The idea that somehow we're going to drain the pond, it's more just nonsense. What I'm getting at is there's some people here, they don't want us growing pot in this location. The fact that it's not going to affect them has nothing to do with the price of tea in China. They're going to lie, they're going to whore themselves out, they're going to say whatever it takes to keep us out there. But if, if we go step by step by step, none of it has any merit. Oh, my favorite, oh, it's going to increase traffic. We're not having a dispensary here where, where people are coming. We grow the pot, when you're done, you chop it up, pick your buds, you send it out for testing. You go and, and talk to some dispensary people. They say they want to buy some, great, you put it in a package, after it's been tested, you deliver it to them. There's no more traffic than you coming and going for your job. So again, this is just more BS. I mean, it's just, you're going to hear one lie after another. And, and if you look at it rationally, oh, it's going to affect property values. That was, that was a great one, I thought. Why in the Sam hell would I want to destroy my property values? I paid half a million dollars for my house, why would I do that? If you look at the, the houses on Twenty Fourth Street, the ones that are on at least five acres that are zoned agricultural, those houses are worth more than the ones on the other side that all the people are bitching about it. And quite frankly, you're going to hear lots of people whining and bitching about growing marijuana. All the people on Twenty Fourth Street are already zoned agricultural and they can so do it. And in fact, I, you know, if I'd have bought the house two, two doors down, I'd have been allowed to do that. So the idea that, that pot plants are going to jump up here and, you know, the devil's lettuce is going to take over Norman, it's all, it's just nonsense. This is, this is plain and simple. When this passed, sixty-five percent of the people wanted it and the old white folks didn't want it. And now we're here complaining about it. It's, it's politics, it's personal preference. I'll say it again, if I'm growing pot, been growing pot for the last year, no one's heard it, seen it, smelt it, tasted, complained about it, one iota, one iota. Now when we want to try to get a license and do it right, there's a crisis. I didn't want to, to change the zoning here, to be quite frankly. I met with Mr. Powell in the city attorney's office, and their comment was that the council would not approve a medical marijuana growery at residential estates. So I thought, okay, okay, well, let's change the zoning to agricultural. Quite frankly, if, if you deny me and say, fine, we don't care, you could do it at residential estates, that would suit me just fine. It doesn't really, the reality of it is if I'm zoned agricultural and the properties around me are zoned agricultural, if you go across the street and to the east, that corner's agricultural. If you look at the section land, section six hundred forty acres for us city folks, the vast majority of this section is agricultural. I don't really think I'm changing the texture of the neighborhood in any way. I don't think I'm affecting anybody's value. Oh, the other one, there's going to be a bunch of crime, crimes coming here. Let me give my criminal friends a tip. Go to the dispensary because that's where the finished product is at and that's where the cash is at. If you break into a, a, a nursery, a grow facility, you got a bunch of plants. What's that get you? You got to chop the plants down, you got to pull the buds off, you have to trim them, you have to cure them. You got a, you got a bunch of work in front of you. And if you're a criminal, you probably aren't interested in that much work. You probably, you know, so I would recommend you just go to, what, we got fifty, sixty dispensaries in town. Go there and do that. At any rate, does anyone have any questions about what we're doing? The, the garage is forty foot by sixty foot, it's a ten car garage, has a second floor to it. Again, I said, is, is built into the side of a building. Can't see it, you can barely see it from the street. We have a security system, we have a fence, we have some German Shepherd dogs, you know, to keep the bad guys aware. We do that anyways, we had that before we came up with this cockamamie idea of mine. But if there are questions, I'd love to entertain them, Ms. Clark.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. So it's for, your plan is for a commercial grow operation, is that correct?
Commercial meaning if I grow one plant and sell it to someone else, it's a commercial grow, yes sir.
Like you're going to have a commercial grow license from the state?
Yes sir, I have to pay the city of Norman nine hundred bucks, the state of Oklahoma, twenty-five hundred bucks. Oh, by the way, it's been inspected by the code people here from Norman, and they signed off on it. And the fire department, whoever, everybody signed off it except for Ms. Hudson's department, the zoning people. So yes.
But you were mentioning fifty or so plants is what you're having in mind though?
Yeah, roughly, sure. I, I never, never sat down and measured out how many we'd do it. We didn't ever get to that point, but that building, that building wouldn't hold a thousand plants. Probably wouldn't hold five hundred plants if you were really into it, you know? But it, it may, fifty, sixty, seventy plants, yes.
Not planning to do a processing business?
No, no, that's it. If, if you get into the, if you go on the OMMA, Oklahoma Medical Marijuana Association's website, you have to have a separate license for that, have to pay another twenty-five hundred dollar fee, you have to be inspected. I believe I have to go back to the city and get the city's permission to do that and, and have to go through the whole inspection process. So no, we're not processing. Processing meaning manufacturing joints or, or squeezing the, the plant, or heating the plant to get THC so we can put in cookies or, and no, I'm not baking to, to put it in cookies. It's simply growing plants, comparable to a tomato garden. Except for, you know, if you've ever grown tomatoes, you can do that all year long and not make a dime out of it.
Okay. My next question is actually for staff, for Ms. Hudson. Appreciate that answer, Mr. Bell. Jane, would you mind going over some of the differences between agriculturally zoned property and residential estate? Like what would be some of the concerns that residents would have about this being rezoned to agricultural? Based on, Mr. Bell may have an intention to do what he's going to do and may very well follow through with exactly that, and it won't be a problem and all those things. But if it were to be sold to somebody else, they would then have the agricultural zoning. What are things that that would allow to be done on that property that would give them concern about a rezoning?
Well, so for the residential estates, obviously, you know, it's residential estates, large acre lots. If, if it was rezoned to A one and somebody else came in and bought the property is what you're asking?
Yeah, what, a variety of things that A one would allow them to do. Not cannabis related specifically, but just any agricultural type uses that, you know, that is not allowed in residential estate but would be forever now if we approved this zoning change to A one.
Well, I'm sorry, hold on just one second.
Sure. I was also wondering too, if, one, another question staff could talk about too. Is the option of a PUD, if that was discussed with Mr. Bell and?
You do realize that you're speculating that I'm going to sell the property and that's the sheer fabrication on your part? Nobody's talked about that anywhere.
Well, that's true, but it could be fifteen years from now, it could be twenty years from now. It could be anytime, if we change the zoning tonight, it changes it forever.
Isn't that true of residential estates? It's already approved, I mean, for general purpose farm and gardening, and it's forever and ever for, until time?
Sure.
Well, of course we change it.
And the council in nineteen sixty-something, sixty-three, I think, changed it for whatever reason. And so I'm really interested in if we change this to agricultural and one day if you're not the owner, and it's not that I don't trust you, Mr. Bell, I'm just trying to clarify what would be allowed on that property in perpetuity, if you're not there anymore, who might come in after and what, what would they be allowed to do without having to come to council or notify neighbors and things?
Mr. Holman, you got me. I can't tell you what's going to happen after I die to the property.
Sure.
Maybe my son will stay there, maybe he won't.
And that's generally the?
That's the kind of nonsense excuses that we're making up to get to things. And I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to call you out personally and?
No, you're not, Mr. Bell. Okay, Ms. Hudson, can you please come back and answer Mr. Holman's question?
I'll get back to that in a second. Sure, yes ma'am. You got stuff to put there to you.
Okay, so council member in the RE district, of course, it's single family home. There's a daycare, general purpose farm and garden, a type one mobile home. Then it lists out accessory buildings. One guest house is also allowed, and then also the short-term rentals. Within the A one zoning district, you've got a detached, single-family home, church, temple, public school, agricultural crops, raising of farm animals, and then all of the following uses, which can include a country club, family daycare, home, golf course, home. which can include a country club, family daycare, home, golf course, home occupation, library, playground, farmer garden, uh, medical marijuana, commercial grower, uh, medical marijuana education facility and then short-term rentals as well.
And the PUD issue, I don't know if you were involved in any, any conversations about it, but the reason I bring up the PUD and why I always do is because that allows more certainty about what a property will be used for and it allows us to attach that use to the owner of the property. In some cases where we can say, this property sells to someone else, it then reverts back to its original zoning or the underlying zoning. That way neighbors know, okay, we trust Mr. Bell and we're gonna let, we're gonna be okay with him doing this, but since we don't know what would happen after, the PUD would protect us from any future stuff in some cases if it was, you know, done right, done that way, so.
So, yes, you're correct, within the PUD or SPUD, we can, uh, list the uses and the restrictions that would be, you know, uh, for the uses that would be occurring on that property. I would really look to legal to determine whether or not we could attach a rezoning after the property is sold. I know special use?
That's what I was actually thinking.
Okay, okay, special use, yeah, if it, if it lays vacant or, uh, you know, uh, for two years, then that use expires and it goes back to the original zoning, right?
Okay, well, that's the kind of line of questioning I was getting at there, so, thank you, Jane, I appreciate that.
Mm-hmm. Councilmember Hall?
Um, I think my question is either for Ms. Walker or Ms. Mukla, I'm not sure who's the? Speak up, please. And can you hear me okay?
Elizabeth Mukla, City Attorney's Office.
Thank you. Um, would you just clarify, um, why it's not an allowed use now in RE? The medical marijuana, commercial grower designation?
Uh, certainly, um, specifically, it's not because it's, it's not listed. Whenever the city of Norman adopted its medical marijuana uses, it opted to be very specific to the definitions adopted by the state and to tie them directly to those definitions of the state. And so, when those specific categories were created, it made it clear throughout the zoning ordinance, if they exist in one place and they're not listed in another, then they're not allowed in that other place. And so, that's the situation we have with RE zoning. They were never added there and so they don't fit into other categories. It's not how our ordinance is interpreted.
Okay, thank you. And then the other thing I just wanted to make sure that I understood, because this is a, we are, this is a request for a zoning change. It's currently zoned RE, which is a resident, residential designation. Um, and so, um, this is where it gets interesting to me with the medical marijuana, commercial grower designation because, um, if we do approve, um, this zoning change, then it's not current, it's not just what is, uh, Councilmember Holman was alluding to, not just what the current use of the applicant might be, but what is attached to it for, uh, the future. And so, could you tell me a little bit about, um, because, uh, there's a definition in the staff report of what would be allowed. So, currently, we're just talking about cultivating, correct? Okay, but, um, if we approve this zoning change, um, it also allows, um, other things would be permissible, correct? Um, so it's preparation and packing of marijuana wholesaling to other businesses, um, as well as sale of seeds and flowers, clones to other growers without limitations to amount. So, it has the potential for an expansion of what the current use is being requested for now. Do I understand that correctly?
Right, if it were to be rezoned to A1, the use that's listed in A1 is tied to the state definition, which is what you were reading from. So, you know, legally, it could be allowed to occur under that zoning if it were adopted.
Okay, and, um, accord, and I, this might be, I think that's it, thank you, uh, Ms. Mukla.
Ms. Holman, I attempt to interest?
No, she's still, she's still asking her questions, sir.
Um, and then Ms. Hudson?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, that, as was mentioned, there, there is a significant neighborhood protest for a variety of reasons, but what I'm interested in is, um, the zoning request change because according to, um, the map that we got, this parcel is surrounded, um, by either residential or residential estate zoning, correct? I mean, there is some A2 in the area, but it's not surrounding this parcel in any way.
Uh, correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I just wanna make sure I understood that, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Are there any other questions from Councilmember Bierman?
Jane, you can stay, I've got a question, this might actually, both questions be for you. Um, I'm not expecting a perfect answer, but can you tell me off the top of your head how many A1 or A2 zoned parcels in Norman are completely surrounded by residential zoning?
I, I couldn't even begin to guess, there are some, um, older A1 tracts in, you know, in town. Um, I'm sorry, I, I really couldn't begin to guess.
That's fine, that was a question that kind of just occurred to me, so. Um, and the second is, in your recent memory, how many items have come before us with a protest percentage over seventy-five percent? I can't, I can't think of one since twenty-seventeen, since I've been on council.
I, I think that there was one, uh, but it has been probably ten-plus years ago at least. And, and I don't even remember what it was, I just seem to remember the map.
Okay, thank you, those are my only questions.
Councilmember Patron?
So, just for clarification, if this particular applicant, if this doesn't pass tonight, can he, um, reapply for a special use permit, um, u- u- under RE?
Uh, no, there is, there is no, uh?
There's not an avenue at that point?
Right.
Okay.
There's no?
Um, and then, um, the applicant has stated that there's not gonna be any more than fifty plants. Is that written, if we were to pass this tonight, is that written into the zoning that he is, um, limited to fifty plants? Or if he decided that, you know, business, he's got a really good crop and he has something, you know, very unique and popular strain? Um, and wanted to scale up, would he have, be by right allowed to scale up the operation?
Correct, there are no limitations established with this zoning request.
Um, I think that's it for me right now, thank you.
Are there any other questions from council regarding this item? All right, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. See, we have some, just a reminder, comments are limited to three minutes.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, uh, City Council, I represent Nancy Burgess that lives out there and her family members, so I'm representing more than one person, but I don't think I'll be more than four minutes, so. If you could indulge me for a few minutes and you ask some questions that are very pointed. First of all, not saying Mr. Bell is trying to mislead you, but he made the statement, it's, he's in A1, uh, or, uh, it's agricultural now, it's not, it's RE. And, um, I had a, this is, I had a PowerPoint here, let me, not, he's asking obviously to change this from, from RE to A1. My client and most of the, a lot of the neighbors have been out there since nineteen sixty-seven to nineteen sixty-nine. This is how long they've been out there and made this home. I trust that, I don't know that any of you were born when these were going on, that's how long they've made this their home. So, this is a very important issue to them. Um, and this is Mr. Bell's property and as you can see, he has the house and it has this outbuilding where he intends to grow. He's got a lot of other property and it butts up to the lake. And you can see, it is a very nice barn, I don't dispute that and I don't dispute that Mr. Bell, when he bought this, he knew, and as you know, it's eighty-seven protest, when he bought this, his intent was to grow medical marijuana. He's a lawyer by trade, he didn't do his due diligence and he was not allowed to do this in this when he bought it. And so, the city, the regulations that you're looking at now are regulations that are in effect at the time he bought the property. So, he's essentially here asking for, uh, forgiveness, not permission. The city created the unique zoning district for medical marijuana, acknowledging that commercial medical marijuana grow facility wasn't consistent with general purpose farm and garden. And so, they, they follow the state statutes. The problem, and you guys have raised these, Councilmember Holman and, and I think Councilmember Bierman and the others, this is, it applies to the entire parcel, it's not limited to the current outbuilding. He could put any number of buildings out there and continue to grow in those. Once you rezone this entire property, he can do that, he can, it stays with the property and he can have outdoor grow. He says he's not going to do that, but there's no restrictions. And, um, this, this use is not consistent with the current use of residential in nature. There's no commercial uses allowed. This property that he has once was part of Twin Acres Estates, but got separated, so it's not, uh, subject to the covenants, which would not allow commercial use, but it's, um, still adjacent to that. Um, he says he's not gonna do outdoor grow, I'm not gonna go into the water quality and all that. Um, but if somebody bought it from him, they could. Uh, and so, that's, that's the neighbors' issues, he came up here and said they're gonna come up and lie. I'm not lying, their concern is what he could do if it's a complete rezoning. He could have come in here and asked for a PUD and I think it may be less than five acres could do a SPUD, where you could put these restrictions. I understand that's expensive, the thing is, if he's going to pay, and he said nine hundred for a license and that's annual and then the license with the state, if it's gonna be a commercial operation, he wants to maximize his profits. So, he's, you know, may well say, this is going well, so I wanna add additional buildings, I wanna do some outdoor grow and see how it goes. And he would be within his rights if you pass this straight rezoning. That's the problem the neighbors have. They don't care about him growing plants for his own use. I'm not even sure I would be here on their behalf if it was a PUD where it was that old, only one building. It's the total change in the character and the unlimited use that he could have on that. He could sit here and say he's not gonna do anymore, we don't know that. But he, he knew when he bought this property, if he had done any due diligence, that he couldn't do this and, and now he's here to ask for forgiveness. I just wanna show you a couple, this is my client's house and yes, these are very large lots, but it's, and, but you see the houses together, it is a residential area. This is Mr. Bell's property and you see all the area back there that he could put additional outbuildings on and, and have an outdoor grow. And that's the back of his property that goes to the, to the lake, so. And right across the street is the Holbrook Edition and it is residential, so. I, I'm not here to, to disparage Mr. Bell, I'm just here to say, we don't know what will happen in the future if you do a straight rezoning, do a downzoning like this. And so, we're asking that, you know, for these reasons, the request be denied. And I'll be happy, like I said, I represent, uh, Ms. Burgess, who's been there since nineteen sixty-seven. She's friend with the Bells. Obviously, people have gotten crossways over this issue, they just don't feel like it's been an op, uh, an open, uh, dialogue on what was gonna happen and so, if we were here talking about a PUD, I think several of you might agree that that would be appropriate, but that's not what we have and we're against the rezoning as it stands tonight, so.
Thank you, Mr. Nice. Are there any other public comments? Please come to the podium.
My name's Bill Puyan and I'm at, uh, one of the neighbors in Twin Acre, uh, Twin Acres. I'm at thirty-one, uh, thirty-one forty, Twin Acres Road. And, uh, our, our key concern as a neighbor, and you can see by the, uh, number of protests, is not just that it's agriculture, it's this unlimited agriculture, it's unlimited expansion. This A run gives, uh, Mr. Bell unlimited rights to expand and he's got a lot, five acres and you could put, uh, just one building that he's talking about, uh, even if it's like thirteen hundred square feet, you could put, uh, between five hundred and seven hundred plants. You can grow marijuana in about two square foot. And those plants, uh, grow, they, you can have up to six crops a year and you can have a, a profitable business that you can have between five to seven hundred thousand dollars revenue, business-wise. And we're concerned that with a business like that, that it could be expanded and this gives him the right to expand and that it could be, uh, you could have three to four, uh, you could have a four thousand square foot building out there that you could be growing, uh, having two thousand plants in it and it's gonna be on the north side and the north side does drain into the pond with fertilizer, uh, odor pollution. And in our neighborhood, we're residential and we don't want that. We don't want a four thousand square foot marijuana growing, building there or growing outside and this gives the rights to do it with this A1. And that's where we're really concerned about in our neighborhood. We're, we're concerned about the, the phrase detrimental, detrimental to urban use. And that's where we're at, we're, there are urban use. So, a properly grown, operated marijuana facility should be in a commercial zone area, not in a residential area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other public comments regarding this item?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please introduce yourself.
I am Mary Puyan. And I am representing the, um, family trust who purchased the thirty-eight acres and an additional five acres in December. So, we are that, um, we are north of Ernest and, um, I'm, you all asked the questions and raised the concerns that are in my notes, so I will be brief. Um, I, I want you to understand that that property right now, that thirty-eight acres is our family legacy. And although it's just, um, grass right now, it's going to be our home to our five children. Four of them are here, everyone wave your opposition. This is our family legacy and we, we are gonna ask you to vote no on this application because it is our legacy and it's not what Ernie's gonna do now, it's, it's what's, he will have unlimited rights to do the unknown. And my family is going to live there. We are in Twin Acres, but we also have our family on that northern property, so please vote no, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments regarding this item?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Jessica Morris, I'm one of the trustees for the thirty-eight acres, north and west of Mr. Bell's property. I've been a Normanite for ten years, my partner's a local business owner, um, our, our five children attend Norman Public Schools. And my main concern is, with everything that's been said, is I'm very uncomfortable with rezoning residential property to be agriculture anywhere, like anywhere in Norman, anywhere in Oklahoma, I think that's, I, excuse me. Um, I'm, I don't think that, I don't wanna live in an area where my neighbor can rezon their property to raise pigs. If I wanted to live near pigs, I would move out into the country. I live within city limits, I, my area is zoned residential, I would like my neighborhood to remain residential. And I don't know Mr. Bell, we've never met, I don't know if he's capable of maintaining the responsible growing procedures that he says he's going to do, but what happens if he sells his property? Is the next owner gonna come in and are they gonna do the same thing? I don't know, they could do whatever they want if they're agriculture instead of residential. So, that's my main issue and I'm sure that's been said, but I wanted to come up and let you know that, that's how I feel, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments regarding this item? Seeing none, are there any?
Carlos Perez, I'm Jessica Morris's, um, fiancee, but, uh, I'm getting into the family, it's a great family that, you know, the whole neighborhood that they live at Twin Acres. Um, but I, I wrote a little thing, uh, in its history, Norman has been a town of precedence. Norman was first was developed around the Santa Fe Railroad, home to Passenger Depot as well as a freight station. Norman became the headquarters for the railway. Thus, the city of Norman has agreed to preserve the Santa Fe Depot as a historical landmark and to use the building to benefit the entire community. This precedent was a great start for Norman. Later, a, uh, Norman mayor set a precedent through the territorial legislature to become one of the state's first institu- institutions of higher learning. And of course, in eighteen ninety- And of course, in 1890, Norman was chosen as a location for the University of Oklahoma. We all know what this has meant for the town. OU football and of course, the great institution of higher learning. University of Oklahoma, which defines the whole town. Not to mention our grade schools, which are consistently known as some of the best in the state. You, as council members, unequivocally have in your power the choice to preserve. Preserve the name of this town, preserve the family-oriented, safe neighborhoods, preserve the clean air by not allowing our neighborhoods to be perfumed with the scent of industry. Norman is a great town. We are here today to ask you to listen and think if allowing industry in your, in our family neighborhoods will be something future residents will thank you for when they look at the Norman history books.
Thank you. Are there any other public comment from council, excuse me, from the public regarding this item? Seeing none, are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Councilmember Beerman.
So I am sensitive to some of the issues raised on both sides of this. We are a unique community in that we are large geographically, and we do include a lot of agricultural area. However, we also are responsible and tasked with the long-term vision of this community. Not just what a property is going to be now, but what a property is going to be for the duration of its existence in this community. We don't set zoning to change it on anyone's whim. And I am a strong supporter of medical marijuana. However, I am also a supporter of doing due diligence as a business owner myself before I buy a piece of property, or before I start construction on something, or before I sink money into a business venture, I do my due diligence first. And so for all of those reasons, I will not be supporting this rezoning request. I think that this is something that we do need to tackle. There are some concerns raised by Planning Commission, things that I think this council needs to address. But I don't think that this is the appropriate move for this parcel, for this use, considering the, any number of things that could happen on this parcel in the future, because that is our responsibility. It is our responsibility to look at the long-term use of any parcel in this city. So I will not be supporting this request tonight. I appreciate everyone who took the time to weigh in on an issue that's happening in their backyards. I hope this is not the last time I see you at a city council meeting. And I hope that you all can understand how I came to this decision. And if the applicant would like to come back with something that is not a permanent change to this parcel, that is certainly something I would be willing to consider.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Patron.
Okay. Um, in my ward, Mr. Bell, there are some very similar RE-zoned structure, you know, properties that are, you don't have to get up, you're fine. I'm not going to ask any questions.
I'd love to answer some of the questions that have been raised.
Um.
Go ahead.
There are many RE parcels that are abut or adjacent to whole R1 neighborhoods. And I think that the issue here is not, well, at least it isn't for me, pro marijuana or anti marijuana. I actually think this has been a huge economic boon for Oklahoma, and it's definitely helped us to diversify in this state. I think it has been a plus. That said, I think when people buy their homes, they have an expectation that the zoning that is around them and the way that it has always existed isn't going to deviate substantially. And this is whether or not you would be having a substantial deviation, the effect of it can be. And as a lawyer, I know that you know that, that it's, the zoning changes are going on forever. You would sell your property rezoned. That doesn't mean that you can't personally, if you have a license, a medical license, grow those plants for your own personal use in your garage. I, I'm not sure how that, all of that works, but there are, I remember in the language when I voted for it, that you can grow for your own personal use, and you could certainly lease other ground that's properly zoned and do a grow operation. But I'm not ready to put my ward at, for the, those particular parcels to be in the same situation as what we're seeing now. And I can, I certainly sympathize with the family that came here and said that they bought 30 acres with the understanding that there wouldn't be five years from now, a chicken coop that comes in and creates a terrible amount of smell and noise and all of that. So I agree with Councilmember Beerman that there is a remedy for you. If you still want to do this, you could consider a PUD that restricts it. We can.
This is the shell game this town plays. That's not fair.
Councilmember Patron, please continue.
Thank you, Mayor. There is a remedy for you, sir, that you might consider that's a PUD. And so, and that is something that I would be interested in looking in for you as well. Because again, I think that there is the economic argument, and we want to pave avenues for you to be able to be successful, but to just come in and change the zoning, and it's going to affect your neighbors, whether that's today or 10 years from now, it's going to happen. So for those reasons, I, I'm out.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. Okay, so first, Mr. Bell, I do want to apologize to you for not being able to meet up with you and walk the property. I, when we met in the hallway a couple of weeks ago, we talked for 30 or so minutes. I said I would, and through a miscommunication on my own part, that didn't happen. So I apologize for that. I do feel similar to my colleagues about the straight rezoning. That is kind of the hitch that I'm having. And I don't think some of the concerns that have been expressed about what you want to do are, would be a problem. I don't, with the, with one building and pollution and, you know, smell or any things, I don't think those would be a problem. I don't think traffic would be a problem. I would agree with you on several points. And I agree that, to me, marijuana is not the issue. It's the straight rezoning to an agricultural zoning that allows for multiple different uses. And I get, I can tell it's not what you want to hear, but a PUD would be the, the path. I don't know that that would get the residents of the neighborhood to, to come on board even then, but it would give specific detail about what could be done and what could not be done. And that might get a lot of the neighborhood to be okay with it, in my opinion. I've seen that happen in so many cases over the years where.
Look me bad on there, Mr. Holman. If I did the PUD, what would.
Sir, this is an opportunity for council to make their final comments, and if you can't respect that, I'm going to have to ask you to leave.
I think I will leave. This is a joke.
Councilmember Holman.
Residential states, you guys.
Sir, I have asked you to allow counsel.
I ask you an opportunity to have some final comments.
City manager, can I please have the.
They changed the rules. This was allowed when I started. I went to this gentleman.
We're going to have to ask you to go, sir. Thank you.
I have no further comments.
Councilmember Hall.
I don't really have too much more to add to what my colleagues have already said, but for me, I think it's two different issues. It's, yes, the use, and we're, we're learning as we go about the designation of medical marijuana, commercial grow. But this is just a zoning request, a rezoning request, and it doesn't really fit in with the current zoning that surrounds it. It's completely surrounded by residential. It doesn't fit with the 2025 land use plan. And for those reasons, I'm not able to support this rezoning tonight.
Are there any other comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading. Excuse me. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
No.
Councilmember Carter?
No.
Councilmember Patron?
No.
Councilmember Hall?
No.
Councilmember Foreman?
No.
Councilmember Nash?
No.
Councilmember Holman?
No.
Councilmember Peacock?
No.
Mayor Clark?
No. The ordinance failed by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item 37, ordinance 2021-13, granting special use for light manufacturing and special use for a bar, lounge, or tavern in C2 Intensive Commercial District for property located at Suite 120, 109 East Tonewa Street. Thank you. I assume when it failed unanimously, we were done with it.
Procedural.
Okay, all right, I was right.
Yay.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
So moved.
Second.
Is the applicant or someone representing the applicant here to make a presentation?
Hello, good evening. Well, we would like to talk about beer now.
Please introduce yourself, and remember, you have 10 minutes.
We would love. So my name is Suzette Grelot. I am the co-founder, co-owner, and head beer and cheers leader for Equity Brewing Company. I would also like to introduce my partners, Jackie Braun, who is the marketing coordinator, Lily Braun, who is our head brewer, and Hannah Grelot, who's the sales and social media coordinator. I believe we have a presentation. Yeah, there it is. We also have with us our designer and our builder, Larry Pickering, who's here if you, if you have any questions about the building of the space. We want to thank you for considering our request for a special use permit to establish a small craft beer brewing and brewery and taproom at 109 East Tonewa Street, Suite 120, which, of course, we're happy to acknowledge sits, as all of Norman does, on the lands of the Wichita, Kato, Kiowa, Apache peoples. So as you can see through the slides, I think there are.
There's a clicker.
Tell you a little bit. Is there a clicker? Oh, here it is.
The way.
This it? Okay, so there's the location. They're at the corner of Jones and Tonewa and the tract. It's, it has about four or four suites or so in the space. And our space is next to Yellow Dog Coffee. So we're there on the far left. We also have recently rented the space on the far right, which has some seating area that we will share with Yellow Dog Coffee. There's some location, street, I think that's the view to the south and the view basically right here to the west, and then the floor plan. Uh, Suite 120, and then we also just rented Suite 100A. So here we are, a little bit about us. Jackie and I own another business together, a couple of other businesses. We decided to open an all, the first all-women-owned brewery in the state of Oklahoma with our daughters. So the four of us own and operate the first and so far the only all-women-owned craft beer brewery. Our goals are to create, of course, great craft beer for all of us to enjoy. But we really are also about a mission to bring equity, diversity, and inclusivity to the craft beer industry. We hope to collaborate with all kinds of businesses in our community. Obviously, local beer, craft beer is all about embedding itself in a local setting and coordinating and collaborating with all kinds of other businesses in the community. We also hope to offer consultation services that will assist other brewers in the area and in the state to build more diverse and inclusive community. So, and then there's our location, as we've already gone over. We have five standard beers in our lineup. A saison, Solidarity Saison, a collective action kolsch, Ninkazi New England IPA, Yellow Dog Coffee Stout, and the People's Porter. So these are the beers that will always be on our taps and available for distribution throughout other outlets, tap handles, and package stores. This is the five-barrel system that we plan to insert in the space as well as the one-barrel nano system that we currently own. And then just a little picture here of our build-out. You can see the space 120 there on the left. In the back is the brewing area with the equipment that will be not accessible really to the public. There's a small bar, about eight seats in front, about eight, a couple of chairs, the overhead door, and then the other space over to the far right in front with the two overhead doors that we'll share with Yellow Dog. Our goal has always been to engage in an industry that is great fun and is a wonderful commodity, kind of a magical commodity, but something that we also believe very strongly in, a mission of cracking open an industry that has not been very equitable or inclusive. And so the four of us really hope to contribute to more equitable relations, not only in the craft beer industry, but across the community. So we're happy to answer any questions you might have about the space, about its build-out, or about the brewing industry.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Beerman.
Hi, friends. I'd like to ask you about odor, waste disposal from the brewing process. I'm not probably as familiar with that as I should be as a beer consumer. But can you talk about water usage, water disposal, any, I don't know, leavings? For, I don't know what you do with the hops and the wheat and all of that once it's no longer being brewed. So can you talk a little bit about how that will work?
Sure. So this, this, the water usage, our one-barrel nano system recirculates the water. It has a steam condenser, so it reuses all of the water that steams off. Obviously, beer requires water. It's water, malt, hops, and barley. So I mean, there's not, you know, a lot of ingredients in it. So, you know, water will be used. We'll have a reverse osmosis system in the space to, to remove all of the things from water before you use it to brew so that it doesn't affect the taste of the beer. As far as the spent grain, most brewers in the area work with local farmers to transport spent grain to their farms for feed. We also plan to use spent grain that does not have hops in it for creating specialized products like dog treats, for example. Hops can't be used for that purpose. They're poisonous to animals. So spent grain, though, can be used to do that. So we'll try to minimize the use of water and, and then dispose of the grains in a proper way.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Are there any other questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Carter.
I just think it's a wonderful idea.
Thank you.
Great business concept, and the community values that you're expressing with your concept is fantastic. And when you do your IPO, please call me because I want to invest.
Ah, well, that's great to hear. Thank you.
Councilmember Hall.
So I also have been following this project with great interest from the beginning because it is in Ward 4. And I've learned a lot about craft beers along the way, so appreciate, appreciate that. One of the things that's always an issue, particularly in Ward 4, is parking. So would you address what your parking solutions are?
Right. So it is our understanding that we have no parking requirements as part of the downtown community. There is plenty of parking south of our building on the street. We have a little bit of parking around on the south side of the building, but down on the street to the south as well, there's a lot of public parking. Our hope is that we will contribute to a community destination that will be very walkable. We are just a block and a half south of Main Street, I'm sorry, north of Main Street. So we're hoping that, you know, with the other brewers in town as well. By the way, we will be the sixth brewery in town in the city of Norman and the fourth within the downtown-ish campus corner area. So, you know, we expect that it would be great to have that opportunity to just, you know, walk from one brewery to the other and enjoy local craft beers, you know, for the Saturday afternoon or whatever. So we, we don't expect parking problems at all, and we really hope to contribute to foot traffic in the area.
The other thing I wanted to mention was I have not, there's obviously no formal protest, but I've only heard support for your project with the surrounding neighborhood because you are in a transition area that bumps up to a residential neighborhood. And I've just heard really positive feedback about locating a business like yours in that space and how that fits in with the surrounding neighborhood. So I wanted to mention that. And just also congratulate you for, and celebrate you for having the courage to start a business in the middle of a pandemic. So we, we definitely will welcome you to Ward 4.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hall.
Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. Just a.
Thank you. Just a quick, I remember a couple of years ago, probably five or six now, but I can't remember if it was a rezoning, but I voted for this building to be used as a restaurant after it had been severely damaged in the 2011 downdraft or whatever, God, I can't even think of the name now, but the weather event that we had in 2011 that came out of nowhere and destroyed a bunch of stuff. And this building was really badly damaged, and it was not a very attractive industrial-looking, loading dock-type building, you know, on the edge of downtown. And ever since we approved that, the restaurant never ended up happening, but it was fixed up, the building, and now, I don't know if it's entirely full yet, but some pretty great tenants. And so I'm pretty excited to see this proposal in this building particularly. So I didn't really have any questions about it. They were kind of answered by other people, but I just really appreciate you coming forward with this.
Thank you, Councilmember Holman.
Are there any other questions from council regarding this item? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any comments from the public? Seeing none, are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Nope. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock? Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted on second reading unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
So moved. Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Kate Beerman? Oh, sorry. Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted on final reading unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and congratulations. Item 38, ordinance 2021-14, granting special use for municipal uses in A2 Rural Agricultural District for property located at 3901 Chautauqua Avenue. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I'd like to recognize Nathan Maddenwald, capital projects engineer, to make a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I'm here to present our special use request for property located at 3901 Chautauqua Avenue. The property is located here as shown on the figure. We're located south of Highway Nine between Chautauqua and Jenkins. It's where we have existing facilities. We have the existing compost to the south, the water reclamation facility to the east, and then also the transfer station is located on the subject tract. You can see the areas, let me go back one. You can see the area surrounding us is primarily zoned as agricultural. We are intending to leave it the same, but we're adding the special use for municipal uses. There is very little development around this. To the north is the Oliver Woods, and then city facilities to the east-south, and then there's open area to the west. You can see here what's shown on the site, and the site will remain the same, except for the far west of the site, which is where we're looking at putting our household hazardous waste facility. So I covered a little bit of that. We had kind of two presentations that got joined together. So, yeah, the existing zoning is A2. We're keeping it that, adding municipal use, and intending to continue to use the site for municipal uses. Ran through this already real quick. So the far west side of the site is where we're proposing to put, like I said, the household hazardous waste facility. The existing transfer station site won't change, and the water reclamation facility won't change. Here's a picture showing what the look of the household hazardous waste facility will be. The, we're changing the drive entrance for the transfer station site. So you can see on the figure, instead of it coming in kind of at a 45-degree angle from Chautauqua, we're coming in straight from the west, so they'll enter the site. Transfer station vehicles will still be able to access the drive by going further to the east and going to the transfer station. If a user wouldn't like to go to the household hazardous waste facility, they'll be able to go north, follow those blue arrows. And it'll be a similar operation to what we have now for the annual events that we have, where they'll stay in their car. Our people will go out and unload it, and then they'll process it there in the facility. And then if they do want to come around and park in front of the building, they would be able to do that for obtaining items that we deem are in good condition and are reusable. That way, we can reduce the amount that we have to send for disposal. That was very brief, but with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So this looks like a cleanup, and we're clearly already using it for municipal purposes. Is it because we're building the household hazardous waste facility that we have to go in and clean it up like we did at North Base?
That's exactly right.
Okay. Are there any other questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Holman?
Just to be clear, that this would be like a Monday through Friday or seven days a week, or what type of facility would we be looking at? Would people need like a city utility bill or anything like that?
Yeah. We would look for them to have a city utility bill. The exact days of operation, we're still trying to determine. We would really need to determine it based on, you know, how much demand we see, because we don't want to have it be Monday through Friday, and then we don't get enough demand to justify having the people there manning it. And then we're kind of thinking that we would at least have a Saturday option too, since there's a lot of people that work and they may not be able to come during eight to five on, during weekdays.
I appreciate that. This is a really big deal, in my opinion, because I receive questions all the time about what to do with stuff and the yearly event to, maybe we used to do it twice a year, I can't recall, but it's always been very popular. But obviously, stuff can, sometimes people have stuff to get rid of all the time, and so I think having a permanent facility like this is a really great thing for us. So, thank you.
Are there any other questions from council regarding this item? Seeing none, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, are there any final comments from council regarding this item? All right, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on, oh, Councilmember Carter?
I just wanted to say kudos to the staff on just the outstanding design, and I think this is a very, very needed project because I get questions literally from my wife about what to do with stuff all the time, and I never know what to tell her. So...
I've got stuff in my closet.
When are we expecting the opening?
So we're moving items kind of on a parallel path here. So we actually have it out to bid now. We'll open bids this month, and then we have an incentive option for them to get it open in May, but probably July, I mean, summer is what I would say to be a little bit more conservative. So...
And I think another question we all might get, how are we paying for this?
We're paying for this out of our sanitation funds. We had allocated money there for material recovery, so that industry has not really proven out. So we're utilizing this money because we think it's a better service for our customers.
Thank you. Any other final comments from council regarding this item? All right. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted on second reading unanimously.
All right. Excuse me. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance was adopted on final reading unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. For our final item of the night, ordinance 2021-25, amending section 14-310, 14-312, 14-503, and 14-504 of Chapter 14, Section 20-210, 20-526, 20-701 of Chapter 20, for court and traffic ordinances. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinances on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I'd like to recognize Anthony Pirenton, Assistant City Attorney, representing the applicant, to make a presentation.
Hi, so I'm bringing these ordinance amendments. My name is Anthony Pirenton. I've met some of you. I'm an assistant city attorney here. I'm kind of new in my position, but I'm glad to be back with the city of Norman. So I wanted to bring these ordinance changes that we have adopted. I've had the opportunity to work in municipal court for about a little over a year now. So working here, I've been able to identify some of, just some housekeeping changes to our ordinances. So I think we've had these ordinances on the book since '72. So some of them just have kind of needed a little bit of a freshen up with time. Sometimes, you know, state law will change. Sometimes one section of the ordinance will change, but, you know, other sections that reference that section will not change. So these are just kind of meant to be a general housekeeping amendments, and so I'll go through them line by line. There are a lot of small changes, so let me know if you have any questions over specific small changes that I might go quickly through. So, here we go. So, starting with Chapter 14, which covers municipal court administration, we also have Chapter 20. There are some changes in there over the traffic offenses. So the proposed changes make both Chapter 14 and 20 consistent with each other. There's a lot of interplay between the two, because, as you know, municipal court enforces Chapter 20. So, and we also have to look at state law because there's a lot of interplay between our ordinances and state law. So... The first section that was amended is 14-310. This covers administrative payments. So those who are familiar with the traffic court process, if you've ever got a speeding ticket, one of the options available to defendants in municipal courts, if they're charged with any violation, some of those violations are available for administrative payments at the counter. What that means is instead of having to come in front of the court and make a formal appearance, you can just pay certain citations and then be done with it. So you enter a plea of guilty or no contest, and then you pay your citation, and it disposes of the citation. Only some violations are available for that option. So, and this is where the interplay with Chapter 20 comes into play. So one of the things we added was, we added a reference to transporting an open container, which wasn't in the ordinance originally. It was in the administrative penalty section, but it just wasn't referenced in any ordinance that was also carried a possibility of imprisonment. So we just added that to make it consistent with current practice. We also changed the administrative payments for improper registration and improper equipment to be consistent with Chapter 20. So in these, both of these were raised about by $10. So we didn't really want to raise any administrative payments that defendants would pay at the counter. We were kind of sensitive to that issue. But the problem is, so, excuse me. In Chapter 20, a defendant who is sentenced in front of the court is sentenced to these two offenses and anywhere from a fine range between $35 and $200. In the administrative payment section, I think for improper registration, it's $25, and then improper equipment, it's $20. So the fee schedule that they would pay at the counter is technically less than the minimum they could be charged in municipal court. So we just needed to make those consistent. We also delete an obsolete reference to possession of marijuana. That is actually covered by a different subsection because we changed possession of marijuana to be a lesser maximum fine of $400 than it was originally, and it no longer carries a potential of imprisonment. So technically, it's now obsolete because it's included under a different subsection. So they can still make those administrative payments, but it's just an obsolete subsection. So we also add administrative payments for transporting of firearms. So this isn't, so our Chapter 20 ordinance doesn't technically cover all improper transportation of firearms. This is only a pistol, and under the state statute, the only fine that is available for that violation is $70. So really, we just added that so they could pay at the window the $70. We couldn't charge them any less or anymore. So that's why we added that. And then finally, we deleted the subsection allowing the administrative payments for second or subsequent non-traffic violations consistent with certain practice. What was in there before is if you violated municipal ordinance for a non-traffic violation, you were, the administrative payment jumped to the maximum of $750. And so that's not really consistent. Usually, if we have repeat offenders, we don't really jump to the maximum fine. So we didn't really charge them that much at the, you know, counter to begin with. We kind of just sent them to make a formal appearance. At that point, if we have a repeat offender, we would kind of want to see them in municipal court anyway, and we don't really want them paying at the counter because we want to see if there is some behavior that, you know, some underlying resources that we may be able to connect them to. So we kind of want to talk to them and have them see the judge. So next subsection is, so Section 312 is traffic violations. This is just a typographical error. I deleted a errant U14-503. This is just to match with current municipal court practices. So this gives the municipal court to put people on a deferred sentencing, or sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. This deletes a reference to an obsolete subsection C that was previously deleted in 1994 by another ordinance. So we referenced a subsection C. It's no longer there. We just took that out of there. Section 504, this is one I was alluding to earlier. So municipal court, we have the authority to put people on a deferred sentence, which is a deferred adjudication. This allows them to plead no contest and also receive the deferred sentence, which is consistent with current usage. And then our penalty range, penalty range in Section 20. So this is when someone would appear in front of the court and they would be sentenced by the judge. So this is a quality-of-life change, but we added titles. Every time we referenced another subsection, we would just add the title of that subsection to make it more readable for anyone who's reading the ordinances. We also deleted reference to Section 20-526, which is DUI. I'll get to that in a different slide. And then I also, we changed the fine range for insurance citations, which is actually, we allow for a greater fine range in our current ordinance than state law allows. So state law maximum is $250 with 30 days. Our maximum is $750 with 60 days. So we're just matching state law. 20-526, so this is, we're deleting this to be reserved for future use. So state law, we used to be able to prosecute DUI offenses in municipal court. Now that is solely under the purview of district court actions, they can no longer be charged with a DUI or DWI in municipal court. So this is now obsolete. And so, and this is kind of the section that prompted the change to these ordinances. The city has authority to impound vehicles on a myriad of criteria, one of them being if the vehicle has a more than three unpaid traffic citations. So the state law recently changed, which now if you get a new vehicle, you are supposed to, and sell your old vehicle, you are to take your tag and keep it with you, and then put that tag on the new vehicle. It's a keep-your-tag. So they kind of changed how you register your car and the transfer of title between two vehicles. So the way our ordinance is written, now it kind of creates a loophole. And so this was brought to our attention, and we wanted to close that loophole right now. If a car has more than three unpaid citations, we have the authority to impound it. Now, it's the vehicle or the license plate displayed on the vehicle. That way, if you want to upgrade your car to a 2016, you still have to pay your three unpaid parking citations when you take that tag and put it on your new car, because that, three paid-in citations will now transfer with your tag. So that kind of closes that loophole, and it allows our parking officers to enforce that ordinance. Does anyone have any questions? I know that was a lot of changes.
Councilmember Petron?
Just for the public who might be watching at home, can you clarify that under the ordinance that you're proposing here, these changes, that they are, is it consistent with state law for the transporting of a firearm? In other words, is this dais changing what the law is for transporting firearms?
No. So this only allowed, the proposed changes only allow for an administrative payment in lieu of a court appearance at the front counter. So let's, for example, if someone, and I will say, working in municipal court, this is a very rare violation. So for example, if someone receives this citation, they come up to the counter, they want to pay, the court clerk can basically accept payment in lieu of a court appearance and accept that $70. The reason is, even if they came to court, the authority that the court has to sentence that person, they would only be able to sentence them to... they would only be able to sentence them to $70 under state statute. So this isn't changing whether or not a violation occurred. It's just changing whether or not someone can pay for it at the counter rather than making it, you know, changing it to, whether they, it's basically changing whether or not they have to come and make a formal court appearance.
Right, but it's consistent, what is defining an unlawful transport of a firearm? That is state statute, not this dais, correct?
Yes. So in our, in our subsection, which also contains a violation, mirrors state statute, Ward Four.
Thank you.
That was going to be my same question, is just clarifying that this is a, just bringing our local ordinance into compliance really with state law changes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council regarding this item? Seeing none, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments. Are there any public comments on this item? Seeing none, are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted on second reading unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted unanimously on final reading.
Thank you, and welcome back, Mr. Pierinton. This meeting is adjourned.